Good evening, I'd like to call the November 11 Finance Committee to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and delivered to be just as for all.
All right, we have nine items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the October 7th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the correction of taxes for AT&amp;T. I believe this one is Jeff Yoder, City Assessor. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. So you have before you a resolution for the rescinding of taxes for AT&amp;T. So we discovered that there were two businesses and AT&amp;T had changed their name, we weren't aware of it. So this is from 2018 and we're advising that this would be passed.
Okay. And they didn't want to generously donate that to the city?
No, I don't think so.
Maybe next time. Any questions for Jeff at all? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item number three is a disallowance of the claim for David Hunsaker. We've got a memo in our pack out, in our packets. Yeah, and I think this is just our standard.
Standard claim that went through insurance and insurance advised that the city does not have any liability, so we're denying it.
Entertain a motion on this one?
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number four is to approve the 2020 shared ride taxi agreements. Presentation by Doug Newman, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. In front of you, you have the taxi service contract with FDS Enterprises. This is the fifth year of a five-year agreement with FDS. First quarter 2021, we'll be going out for RFPs, I'm sorry, 2020, we'll be going out for RFPs for additional services for years after. We do expect a significant increase after that RFP comes out. We'll be back here in approximately six months, discuss that with the Finance Committee and the council as well. But the contracts you have, contract you have in front of you for 2020 service is through FDS Enterprises with an increase of 1.7% based on the CPI increase. The total contract is $1,117,659. Along with that, we have the vehicle lease agreement. The lease agreement remains the same, other than updating the vehicle list for the current fleet we have.
Thanks, Doug. Any comments or questions for Doug?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number five is approve the 2020 city shared ride taxi operation. Again, Doug Newman.
So we're also seeking approval for the 2020 taxi operational plan. Approving this plan also approves grant application for the two new vehicles listed in your packet, one mini bus and one minivan. The terms, conditions really remain the same. The city Vehicle Maintenance Department does the maintenance on the vehicles. Without going through the information thorough, I can name a few bullet points. One is on table, table two in your packet. You will notice a trend of declining ridership. In 2017 and 2018, ridership stayed fairly similar. In 2018 to 2019, up to this point, a month to date, you can see the ridership is down about 4,000 rides. Looking at the trend over the last few years, from 2014 to 2017, it is a consistent average of around $4,000 to $5,000 in reduced rides throughout those years as well. Other than that, the detailed information was included with your packet. If you have any questions on those details, I can try to answer those. Otherwise, we're seeking approval for the operational plan and grant application.
So Doug, has there been any talk about some of the reasons for that declining? Is it just generational or is it fares are too high? Is it any idea whatsoever?
Well, I thought someone said something. With the economy the way it is, we can only imagine several reasons why it would be. One would be individuals are driving themselves more. Other than that, it's been a trend for a while. It's, it seems a little bit unusual that we had the two years that were very, very close because the trend since 2014 was about 4,000 to 5,000 a year less.
Okay. I'm not sure if the, of the rideshare services out there, if they're doing a lot within the city. So if anybody has any information on that, that'd be fantastic. Other than that, I'll open up for questions for Doug. If not, oh, Chris, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Doug, I mean, it's the same conversation we have every, every year, but with the, with the revenue that's coming in from fares, you know, combined with grants, do you feel that, are you still pretty confident that we're breaking even at this point? Because I, I mean, I'm ready for you to tell me when we're going to jump off a cliff.
That's a good question. As this year, it looks as though we're going to be budget neutral. Once we get into the next five-year agreement, when the RFPs go out, we do anticipate an increase in the contract rate for the service. We were, we were approached as an ask to increase that contract beyond the agreement, but advised against that through our Federal Transit Association or Administration. So the ask was there already, so that's why we are anticipating an increase in the upcoming five-year agreement.
It'd be interesting if when we sent out the RFP and we're working with these, you know, different providers, if, if any of them have connections or are ways to provide assistance, you know, to help us balance that, that point, you know, they might be more knowledgeable in those aspects than we are. And I'd be interested, when we go through that process next year, to see what they can bring to the table as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thanks, Doug. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds of the fire department's surplus equipment. Old fire hose. Presentation by Chief Kudick. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You have before you a request, it's more of a housekeeping item. When we received the funds to purchase the new fire truck, it came with equipment. We purchased new hose with that equipment or with that, with those funds. The hose that was on the current truck that we're selling was over 20 years old, which then doesn't allow it to be recertified after testing for certain pressures. So we reached out to the water utility. Water utility was interested in the hose, so we were able to work out an agreement in which the water utility purchased the hose from us. That wa, that money goes into a revenue account and now we're asking that that money be taken out of the revenue account and put back into the fire department maintenance account.
Thanks, Chief. I'm assuming you gave them a good price?
We did. We like the water utility.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number seven is the award of the Vehicle Exhaust Extraction System Contract FEMA Grant. Again, Chief Kudick.
Hi, again. We, if you remember, a month or so ago, we came to you to accept an award from FEMA for a vehicle exhaust system. We put those, or that contract out for bid. We received a bid that, from a company that is excellent in doing this, came highly recommended. So we only stopped at one bid. It came in under the FEMA grant of $186,000, it came in at $180,000. If you remember, the city has a 10% match of that, so that will have our city match go down as well. So tonight, we're asking for approval to award that grant.
Any comments or questions for the chief?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other final comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. And then finally, Chief, I think you have the item eight, Resolution Accepting Donation from Mr. and Mrs. Ben Salisbury.
Correct. I just wait till I have a bunch of them to bring to you and then I come in. Yeah, before you have a resolution accepting a donation from Mr. and Mrs. Salisbury, they took part in our smoke detector and carbon dioxide insulation program that we have. They were happy with the service. They appreciated it and then they gave us a donation to put back into that account to help fund future smoke detectors and carbon dioxide. That program was started with a grant from State Farm and now most of the smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors are supplemented through a program with Red Cross. So we're able to keep it going, but we appreciate donations that go into that account as well. So this basically takes it, again, out of the revenue account and puts it into, back into that account where we buy smoke detectors out of.
Excellent. Thanks, Chief. Any comments or questions for the chief? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final thoughts? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And finally, item number nine, approve the City of West Bend accounts receivable write-offs. Presentation by Finance Administrator Carrie Winklebauer. Good evening, Carrie.
Good evening. I had three lists of different accounts that require common council authorization to deem as uncollectible tonight. The larger list is comprised of ambulance invoices billed out originally underneath our contract with Three Rivers Billing. And most of those items are still going to be in our state debt collection program for further follow-up and such, so we do still try to collect on all of those. The second, smaller list are invoices from mainly 2017 and prior years for miscellaneous services provided by the city and invoiced by the Finance Department. And the third list are from 2014 through 2016, delinquent personal property taxes that are still outstanding from businesses that have ceased operations. So in summary, I'm looking for authorization from the common council to deem all three of these lists. That grand total, $103,677 of accounts receivable and $5,286 of delinquent personal property taxes as owing but uncollectible. And the finance budget for 2019 includes $130,000 line item for write-offs and also end-of-year audit adjustments for the EMS accounts.
Great. Thanks, Carrie. I know we, Mark, you're one of the new aldermen. The statement that Carrie said that was important there is that while we're writing them off, a number of these are still being pursued as, as they try to get some of those funds back. So this is more just an accounting process. Any comments or questions for Carrie at all? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other final thoughts? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thanks a lot, Carrie. Being no further business to the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
I'd like to call the Licensing Board for November 11, 2019, to order. A note that we have 11 items on the agenda. First item is the Licensing Board Regular Meeting of October 21st, Approval of the Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Item number two, Original Reserve Class B Combination Liquor License from Maple Road, LLC, The Long Branch Saloon, 1804 Barton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number three, Appointment of Agent Ryan Johnson, Meyer Store, Number 299, 2180 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number four, Appointment of Agent Tara Sonnen Tag for Pick and Save, Number 430, 1629 Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number five, Original Class A Combination Liquor Licenses for Fleet Farm Group, Fleet Farm Fuel, 3725 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number six, Original Class A Combination Liquor License for Fleet Farm Group, Fleet Farm, 3815 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number seven is a license, operator's license for Maria C. Fitch. She called earlier this afternoon and said she'd been unable to make it and asked that we pushed it off to the next meeting, which we will do, so that will be before us on December 12th. I'm sorry, December 2nd. Item number eight, Operator's License for Jenny Hamburg. Presentation by Chief Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. The Police Department recommends denial of this license based upon the following incidents and convictions. September of 2015, Ms. Hamburg was in Hartford. Washington County Sheriff was called there to assist. At that time, she was highly intoxicated. She was being, the report was that she was being chased by two males. There's two males, were relatives of hers, that were trying to convince her not to drive. She was intoxicated because it was disorderly. She threw a dog out of a car window, injuring the dog. When officers attempted to take her into custody, she struggled with the officers during that, as a result of that incident, she was arrested for resisting an officer in disorderly conduct. She was found guilty of the resisting and the disorderly conduct was dismissed as part of the agreement. In February of 19, Hartford Police were again sent to a incident involving Ms. Hamburg. In that incident, relatives again called police. She was highly intoxicated. She was attempting to drive. The relatives were trying to prevent her from driving. When officers got there, she again fought with officers as they attempted to take her into custody for the disorderly conduct. She was charged with resisting an officer, disorderly conduct, and bail jumping. She was convicted of the resisting and the bail jumping and the disorderly conduct was dismissed as a part of that agreement. For those convictions and incidents, we recommend denial of this license.
Thank you, Chief. Is Ms. Hamburg in the audience? If you'd like to tell us anything, step up to the podium and let us know what you'd like to say.
I didn't know he was going to be here. Not proud of any of that. I have an addiction to alcohol and mixed with the medication I was on, I was, I have a bad history, so no, I'm, I've been clean and sober since February. I'm in a treatment program in IOP. I currently have a job at Fleet Farm as a customer service lead and I love it. I'm really excited for the new store. I guess they put me through the alcohol licensing, licensing because we, we now sell beer and wine. So it's just to sell it. I'm not drinking, I'm not driving. I would argue some of what he said, but I don't know, not that person anymore and I'm just, it's like, I, we have a convenience store as well, I'll be working out there, so I'm just working and we have it at the store. So I'm not drinking, I'm not doing any of that anymore. I wasn't ready for this, so I'm sorry, apologize. If you want any proof, I have a, I'm on probation. I see her every two weeks and actually go to IOP right after this, so I do that once a week, sometimes twice a week. So I'm on the road to getting better. And I am better, so.
Okay, thank you very much for getting up and talking to us. I know it's hard to do. I have one question for you, if I may. Is, I know part of your job would be selling alcohol possibly.
Yeah.
But it's not going to affect your job if you don't get this license, correct?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I just didn't want to tell them about it.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. Is there a motion on the aye?
Motion to deny.
Second. I have a motion and a second, deny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Ms. Hamburg, if you want, this is just a recommendation to the council. The whole council will later on vote on it and make the formal.
Approval.
Approval. Thank you. Make the formal approval one way or the other. So if you want to just stick around?
Tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sure.
All right, thank you. Operator's License for Alyssa Fisher. Again, Chief Moeller.
Police Department is going to recommend denial of this license based upon a series of incidents that, though they happened five years ago, are serious and involved felony convictions. In July of 14, Ms. Fisher was involved in a retail theft at all places, Fleet Farm, as we were just talking about. She was detained and stopped. This was the Germantown Fleet Farm. In that incident, she had possession of several drug paraphernalia and also in possession of heroin. She was guilty of the retail theft and possession of narcotics drugs, which was a felony. The other charges were read into the record. In August of 14, she was arrested in West Bend. It was an incident where citizens called when she was stopped by officers. She again had possession of numerous items used to use heroin and the items tested positive for heroin. This case was combined with the above case in Germantown. And this case was read into the record. In November of 14, Washington County Sheriff went to Our Place Tavern out on Highway 33 for an after-hours violation. Ms. Fisher was a patron. She initially stopped. She gave a false name to deputies. She tried to flee the tavern. She later on was located by the deputies and she was issued citations for underage person on the premise of obstructing. She was found guilty of those violations. In November of 14, Washington County Sheriff investigated a burglary at Adway's Bar in the town of West Bend. She had been a former employee there. She was developed as a suspect. She was convicted, or she was arrested for the burglary, made a statement that she was, did the burglary to support her heroin habit. She was arrested for these offenses. As part of a plea agreement, she pled guilty to two counts of theft. So for those violations, we recommend denial of her license.
Thank you, Chief. Is Ms. Fisher in the audience tonight?
No.
Good evening.
Good evening. Like you said, these are all things over five years ago. I've really cleaned up my life and that's all I can really say for it. There's no excuses for my past decisions. I really fell bad into the opiate crisis in this area when it was a problem. I successfully completed my probation. I've been discharged off that for a year now and I've been doing really good. I really enjoy working for my employers and it's a bar, so I need the liquor license to be able to work there.
Any questions for Ms. Fisher? Okay, thank you. You have a motion on the aye?
Motion to deny.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Ms. Fisher, also, like I told Ms. Hamburg, the full council will bring this up later on and they'll be the ones making the final decision. This is just a recommendation. Thank you. Operator's License, item number 10, Operator's License for Anthony Hetzel. Again, Chief Moeller.
Good evening, again. Police Department recommends denial of this license based upon a series of incidents and violations beginning in 2014. In March of 2014, Mr. Hetzel was stopped for driving the wrong way on a one-way street. Initially stopped and then he fled officers. Officers later stopped him in search of the car. They found an illegal modified rifle. It was a sawed-off shotgun. He was arrested for operating auto while intoxicated, eluding an officer in possession of the illegally modified rifle. He was found guilty of operating while intoxicated. The eluding was reduced to failure to obey an officer and the charge of possession of an illegal, re-modified rifle was reduced to disorderly conduct with a weapon. In May of 17, Mr. Hetzel was found guilty of operating while intoxicated. Second offense in that case, a citizen called in. West Bend officer stopped him. He PBT'd at a .226 and again, he was found guilty of operating auto while intoxicated, second offense. In June of 17, Mr. Hetzel was involved in an incident at River Horse West in West Bend. Police had arrested a 20-year-old female for consumption and possession of alcohol. Through investigation, it was found that Mr. Hetzel was identified as the person who served the alcohol to the female. He was found guilty of that offense in municipal court. In August of 17, Mr. Hetzel, an officer on patrol was at a downtown bar when he observed Mr. Hetzel drinking. It was in violation of his bail restrictions and he, as he was to maintain absolute sobriety, he was arrested and charged with bail jumping. In September of 17, a similar offense occurred at a downtown bar. And those two offenses were heard and he was found guilty of, one of those offenses and the other one was read, read in. So for those convictions, we recommend denial of this license.
Thank you, Chief. Is Mr. Hetzel in the audience? Good evening, Mr. Hetzel.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. You, what'd you like to tell us?
The last, I should say, the first three were almost five years ago. I did have a very large problem back then. Since then, I, I was here last year, a year ago, almost to the date, and you guys said, behave and get your crap together, basically, and I've done that. get your crap together basically, and I've done that. I got a place to live of my own, got my car. Went through counseling to get my driver's license, got an toxilock, thriving at a new job. Been there since it's opened. Pretty much, I feel like I've did what you've asked. Went through the counseling, the sixteen sessions, whatever, at, um, the Promise Center. I do go to the university club every now and then when I run into rough patches. I do drink occasionally, but not really to excess. As far as the serving to a minor goes, that one was a known patron that turned into a regular at the bar at River Horse West and she used a fake I D for the first two months that she was there. So everybody knew who she was and me and me and Mr. McCree got popped with serving her because she got in trouble. With that, I think, I, I don't have any problems going on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Where were you employed last year when you applied?
Same place.
At the Garden Lounge?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was in building stages, but I had to get it to.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hetzel. Pardon me? You can step up, sure. Give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Jeremy Hahn. I own the Garden Lounge. My address is, uh, three zero three-five Smith Lake Road, West Bend. I've known Tony since February, helped me open the Garden Lounge. He's been my bar manager since March. I knew he had an issue with his drinking and driving in the past, so I explicitly got him an apartment right next door to the Garden Lounge, so it would not be a hassle. I helped him get his car. He really has, you know, pulled things together. And I know it's just not his word on the line. It's, it's my word right now. So I assure you, if he's caught drinking and driving ever, I will terminate him. So you have that as my word. So just consider that when you consider your vote and I respect whatever you decide.
Thank you. entertain a motion on the air?
Motion to approve.
I am going to say motion to deny. So Ian, what are we doing this?
I think this goes to council without a recommendation at that point. Council makes the final decision, so.
Okay. Mr. Hetzel, same as the last couple people, it'll go out to the full council and they'll make the decision. Thank you. Um, number eleven, operator's license is in your honor packet.
Sorry. Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed by the same sign, motion carries. And with that, I will close the licensing board. I would like to call the common council meeting of November eleventh, twenty nineteen to order. And note that we have a forum with all eight aldermen present. We have a total of twenty-seven items on the agenda. First item is the common council, approval of the common council minutes. Regular meeting, October twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number two, common council. Special meeting minutes, November fourteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'd, I'd like to move the minutes. Uh, resolution twenty-seven. The vote is recorded as unanimous with all eight older persons voting in the affirmative. Uh, I had intended and two abstains. It would be seven and one abstention. But you never called for an abstention.
For which item, Mrs. Merk?
Uh, resolution twenty-seven, felony of the office of mayor. It's recorded as unanimous with, uh, eight ayes. Should be seven ayes.
Ian, help me out. Oh, okay.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. I need him. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Approval of minutes for common council, regular meeting, November fourth, twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Items four through sixteen are the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen is a public hearing on the proposed city of West Bend budget for the year twenty twenty. Presentation by Jay.
For the public hearing, you just want to declare the public hearing?
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about the proposed budget for twenty twenty? Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening. Although I'm, uh, changing hats and I'm coming here tonight as a homeowner and a city taxpayer, and some of you probably recognize me as a department head also. I've been involved in the city's budget process for seventeen years, both preparing and administering budgets. My very first year preparing a budget was in two thousand and three. Then city administrator Dennis Melvin told me that he was sorry I was coming in for the worst budget he's ever had to prepare. Um, that year, we cut positions, including a police officer position. We cut our overtime budget, cut other items, and we held the line pretty much in every other category. Every year since then, department heads have pretty much held the line and reduced our budget. Over the years, I have sat through a number of common council meetings, budget presentations, and have attended a number of city staff meetings during budget preparation. We worked through a lot of changes, including the effects of Act Ten, the recession, cuts in the budget, reductions in employee compensation. I think all of us that work in the city recognize the improvements in the city's balance sheet. The city has made strides and accomplished a lot in reducing the city's debt and increasing, in increasing the city's reserves. But this budget and previous budgets in recent years have not addressed long-term capital improvement needs and employee compensation issues. This year and for the past several years, by the time the common council has received the first budget, department staff, department heads and staff have already held the line or cut several requests and have been forced to push off capital budget requests to future years. Every year, we have been told no increases in staff, reduce non-personnel items, and are very limited on any capital improvement. Because of this, department heads' requests for items and personnel issues are constantly being pushed off to the next year. At an earlier common council meeting this year, Alderman Hugesther asked about items in the five-year plan, always being pushed off to the next year and not a lot of progress being made on that list. He was told that the five-year plan was a wish list. I'm not an expert on every department's five-year plan for capital improvements, but I have sat through enough meetings with department heads to recognize that there are serious concerns for safety and efficiencies when using equipment that is aging and in need of repairs. A recent article in the condition in West Bend schools noted that the district has done a poor job in terms of general maintenance and capital facilities management. The task force noted that letting facilities decay prematurely due to inadequate maintenance has added to the present capital expense in the schools. The same could be said for the condition of some of our city roads, city facilities, and other infrastructures. Our budgets have improved as far as debt on paper, but crumbling infrastructure and a capital request list that does not get addressed is also a debt that is being passed on to the next generation and the next council. I want to talk a little bit about the operating versus capital budget, as that was one item that was addressed or discussed two weeks ago. For those of us that were around earlier this decade, after Mayor Sedonico was first elected, there was a mayor's task force. In that task force, there was a recommendation made to stop borrowing for known planned expenses, noting that the long-term interest in debt was costing taxpayers more money. In some areas, we have tried to do that with our budgets. The police department no longer borrows, for instance, for its vehicles and regular technology upgrades. Other areas, we have not done that in the city. In particular, I note the regular borrowing of money in the capital projects to maintain roads. If it is for maintenance, then why are we borrowing? This money should be put in the operating budget. As mentioned above and in reference to the schools, if we fare to do regular maintenance, the long-term, the long-term cost will be greater. If we acknowledge we need to maintain roads, then why are we borrowing for that? In particular, I note that the money in the capital projects budget for pavement maintenance program and annual sidewalk program. If these are annual expenses, shouldn't the city budget for them rather than borrow? Borrowing increases the overall cost of their own maintenance, takes away from other capital projects. I'm not sure, but I believe that was Alderman Jenkins' comment at last week's meeting regarding the capital projects and the roads. In the April twenty eighteen referendum on roads, two of the questions asked is if the city should borrow more money for roads. Perhaps the question should simply have been, should the city spend more to improve on roads? The bottom line, I believe, is that we need to both add money to the operating budget and borrow for the major construction projects such as the reconstruction of Seventh Avenue. I understand, as all taxpayers do, that may result in increasing taxes. I believe it will, however, I believe it will increase the overall value of the city and save us taxpayers money in the long run. I also want to address some staff and personnel concerns. As a result, mostly of Act Ten, but of other things that have occurred in the city, many staff were hired at what was referred to as a beginning salary. They were told their job was within a pay range and that they had the opportunity to reach top pay within that range. That has not happened. Employees working side by side, doing same or similar jobs or work, have been paid at different pay levels and those at the lower pay scales have little or no opportunity to get additional compensation. Differences between represented employees and non-represented employees are causing compression issues in both the fire and police department. The pay and many benefits of city staff are falling behind competitors. We are finding it more and more difficult to hire and retain staff. Washington County just announced a pay plan to adjust and attempt to correct similar concerns of county workers. I ask that the city take the similar approach. Years ago, we did a compensation study, which due to the times was largely ignored. As mentioned above, it is important to take care of facilities and infrastructures, but it is most important that we take care of our most valued resources, our employees. I ask the council to look at these issues in both the twenty twenty budget and future budgets. I recommend you start in a small way by not reducing the proposed twenty twenty budget with carryover, but rather use that money to address capital project issues and/or employees' inequities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else?
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, a resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of West Bend for the year twenty twenty.
I move to, um, restore the, um, eight, was it eight mills or? I, to re, re, uh, I, I moved to submit for approval, the budget originally submitted with a milage rate of seven eighty-five, I believe it was, instead of using the carryover funds to, uh, provide a temporary, um, relief to taxpayers in the city.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions?
We got comments.
Justice?
Alright. I would like to begin by thanking, uh, the former mayor Sedonico for eight-plus years of effective debt management, streamlining city hall, and putting us in a better position to be able to responsibly move the city forward. The city was on an unsustainable trajectory not so long ago. Having said that, the infrastructure of our city is experiencing some significant fatigue. We have a capital projects list that grows longer every year and we continue to be a training ground for municipal labor due to lower wages and less competitive benefits. This is not necessarily a discussion about raising taxes. Hundred and fifty-one thousand or six cents doesn't change much in the big picture. This is a discussion about starting to get things done. If we can get our pazer or roads rating in check, buy the parks department some much-needed equipment, and the fire department the equipment it needs to accommodate some of the new developments currently being considered, as well as offer our employees, mostly people that live and pay taxes in this city, a competitive wage without ever raising taxes at all, by all means, let's have that discussion. I'm a fiscal conservative every bit as much as the next guy, but I also know that it isn't realistic to think that we can go on forever without accounting for these things that aren't properly being addressed. Draw your own conclusions, but don't tell me we don't need it, as it's been suggested. Sometimes making the hard decision means spending the money when necessary. And I second that too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chris?
Maybe I'll let Rich go first, okay?
It's later in first, that's why I called you.
So a couple of things. One, um, as you know, I sent out a memo indicating that the six cent increase, whether it comes from a mill rate increase or from a, um, from the reserves, it's not increasing the spending, um, on the, the tax levy. The tax levy stays the same, um, thanks to expenditure restraint. That holds us in check. So if we have the financial health to pay for it out of what we've already taxed the citizens, I would push for, um, removing the, the six cents and making it back, go back down to the seven seventy-nine like was posted. In terms of road maintenance, we're in a better position now that has allowed us to borrow more money this year without increasing our expenditures on that debt because of our paying down of our debts from eighty-some-odd million down to forty-six million. That's a really good place to be. I don't ever expect us to get to zero dollars on debt. My opinion is if you're not borrowing, you're not using all your resources that are available to you, but also there's smart borrowing. And every organization I know, um, have ever worked for, their, their capital list grows just like, just like the city here. I don't think that's completely out of the realm of normalcy for, for, for any operation. So with that, I'll be voting, um, no to, to this, um, proposal to put the seven cents back in.
Chris?
Sure. I just want to make sure we all understand, and I, I really appreciate Alderman Caston for sending out that memo. The, regardless of where the dollars come from, the budget doesn't change. Budget doesn't change. The budget is as it is regardless of how the funds come from. If we want to have a separate conversation about using reserve funds for capital improvements, um, I'm all for that, but again, that doesn't change the budget that's in front of us tonight. The compensation plan, absolutely. I would love for us to take a look at that. We went through a wonderful process up at the county level. Um, I, I would agree with the chief that that's absolutely needed here. And then I'll just echo what I previously said the last meeting, um, that heck, uh, don't spend money on some of my roads that are in my district and you will have dollars that you could put towards the capital improvement list. I am absolutely in favor of doing that too. We can start chipping away at that list a little bit more. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Justice?
Yeah, the budget does change. It gets more expensive, right? And that's why we put this additional six cents on there to begin with. That's why you guys recommended this. Jay and the finance department, correct?
Sure. The overall expenditure doesn't change, so the bottom line doesn't change. The funding source changes. So by taxing at the rate of seven eighty-five, the tax levy does go up. You, the, the citizens would be taxed more in a seven eighty-five budget, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. The percentages between the two, when we proposed, when we proposed the seven eighty-five budget, if you remember, it was a one-point-six-eight percent increase. And the one-point-six-eight percent increase, and that, that would change to one-point-seven-two now based on how the appropriations have come in from all the other taxing entities. The seven seventy-nine, which you have in your packet. The 779, which you have in your packet, shows a, a point nine seven. So that's the difference between the, the total levy, point nine seven to one seven two. That, that reflects the 785 down to 779. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Carrie, you want to add to that? The levy definitely goes up under the 785 budget. It goes up from
Yes.
779.
Some of the numbers in the resolution would change. Obviously, the, the total general government or the total general fund budget, I would have to increase just a little bit in order to keep that rate at 785. So we would end up putting just a little bit more into the contingency account. And then, so that would go up to 41,084 dollars for the contingency. And then that would bring the total general fund budget to the 24,258,634. And the, the general levy obviously would be going up then because then we wouldn't be using the 151,1 as planned for the 779 rate. I can read through these numbers if you'd like, or? No? Okay.
Well, and then we wouldn't start a hole next year.
Yeah, so what Carrie is sharing, that the, the notice, the public notice that went out is not, you're not just going to see two changes, you're not going to see the 151,1 and the 779 go up to 785, but there's some other ancillary changes within that resolution that's before you as well.
What hole?
Well, we're taking money out of another spot to fill this 151 for next year, but then we start, Jay, explain that for me? That's the way you described it, so.
Carryover, so I don't understand how it would be a hole. So I'm confused as to why it would be referenced as a hole.
Yeah, I think what justice is talking about is the funding source. So if, if the, and we used police cars in the scenario about a month ago when we talked about this. So if the $151,000 worth of police cars, if you will, because they're in our annual operating budget, are funded from tax levy at the 785 rate, then the subsequent year, the, the tax levy would be at a rate that, and an amount that, for expenditure restraint purposes and our levy limit purposes, would be at X. If the rate is, is stays at 779, the, the people are never taxed, the citizens are never taxed for that extra $151,000. I think that's the hole that, you're, you're supplanting levy for fund balance money. And theoretically, to fund that same police car in 2021, you'd be assuming you're taking another $151,000 from the fund balance moving forward versus getting it from the tax levy.
I don't think there's an assumption of that. I'm still not seeing as it a hole because we've, we've taxed the dollars with the intention of spending them. Now we are spending them. So.
You're talking about two different budget years. And Carrie, I don't know if you can explain it in finance ease that's more clear than what I just attempted to do, but if you have a way, feel free.
For the, I can try to explain it a little bit. For the 151,1, if we choose not to use that this year, it basically helps us on the municipal levy limit worksheet, because then we can start at a higher number because we only get a certain amount of an increase from the prior year, so.
But we're already at the levy limit for this year, correct? That's what I was told.
Tech expenditure restraint limit, yes. Levy limit, no.
Okay.
Levy limit, we have capacity under both scenarios.
So we would lose on the expenditure restraint of approximately $500,000.
Correct. We can only increase our budget so much
By growth, yeah.
For, for the expenditure restraint one, yes, correct.
Both 779 and 785 fit in the expenditure restraint.
Correct. And that's what, that's what I'm saying is that if we've already taxed the dollars, they're already ready, and we're just going to take them from last year, move them to this year to help offset the budget. We're still under expenditure restraint. We're still getting our $500,000 from the state, and we're not increasing taxes. Am I wrong there?
The, the 779 does stay under expenditure restraint, so does 785. The budget was built, as you know, that we still qualify for expenditure restraint or that $500,000 in 2021's budget year at 785. The ask was made after the budget was submitted to go down to 779 and supplant it, the levy with $151,000 of fund balance.
Which hasn't been done before. That was, that was in the budget, right? You said that? Yeah, hasn't been done before. Okay.
It's worth noting.
I, I, yeah, I'm just, but the 151 can't be respent, is what I'm, correct? So it doesn't matter where it comes from. If we take it from the, from the carryover funds and pay for it instead of the, instead of raising the taxes to do it, right? If we raise the taxes, the funds go into the general fund and they, they sit there, right? Because we can't spend them due to expenditure restraint.
Can I just add something? Because I think that was part of my presentation, if I may. I understand your point, Alderman Caston. The point of department heads and the other aldermen that have the opposite view is that we have taken, it can be spent. We've taken what department heads have saved in their budgets, and some of it is sometimes dumb luck. For instance, our overtime budget, knock on wood, right now, we have a carryover. I can tell you, previous chiefs to me, they made sure they spent every penny of that. Alderman Hugaster will tell you that. And, and we tried to be more prudent with that money. There are some expenses that come up that we can't budget every penny for. So that money is used, has been in the past, and we are asking that we use that to offset some capital projects that will save money in the future because that's money that we won't have to borrow for to buy some of that stuff. It's money that's there. So it does save some money. It, it is being respent on, on items that we have been asking for, for years, that the more we put off are getting more expensive to replace and are going to cost if we have to borrow for them.
And I get that. What I'm being told is that if we spend that, we're, we're up to our limit for expenditure restraint. The 151, if I spent, if I now spend that out of an expense budget as opposed to a capital budget, how do we, if we're under expenditure restraint and we're, we're now constrained to that, how can I now spend another $151,000? So it doesn't add up in my head.
I don't, I honestly don't understand your question. Carrie, can you help try to interpret?
I guess I just, I'm going back to the municipal levy limit worksheet and that 151,1, if we include that, I don't really know how to explain it.
That's just it. And it's coming, the 151 is there whether we take it from, we raise the taxes or we take it from fund balance or the carryover. The 151 is still there either way.
For next year, yeah.
So.
Can, can I get in here, Rich? I mean, you just keep talking. I, I want to know, as I understand it, the performance or the, the fund balance, that's money that can be expended by the council on a two-thirds majority vote, correct? So, so that if we spend 151,000 of what we have in the fund balance, that's 151,000 less that we, that we could use to address an unanticipated capital expenditure or an improvement or addressing some salary issues? I mean, you're, you're saying, let's take that 151,000 and remove it from our savings So that becomes a tool that we're willingly giving up. I'm not saying that we have to spend it. I would like to leave it in the fund balance, and, and that's why we have the ability on a two-thirds vote to, to expend those funds.
Well, Jay, you, that's what you and the Finance Department suggested that to begin with as responsible economics, right?
We recommended the 785. That's, that's a true statement. To Alderman Allen's point about the fund balance, you did a month or so ago expend 771,000 out of the fund balance to purchase the Schmidt Land, excuse me, in anticipation of the TIF 14. So that, yes, you, you do have the ability to spend those monies for things that the council feels strong enough about to have a two-thirds vote to spend.
Then my motion stands. I think the motion stands.
You look like you wanted to say something.
He's staying out of the show.
Okay, I guess if there's no more comments or questions, I have to announce that I will vote as an alderman on this item. All those in favor of reinstating the levy limit to 785? Is that the correct motion?
Correct.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign?
Aye.
Stephanie, can you do a roll call, please?
Can you restate the motion that we know?
So the motion was to approve the budget with a levy, or with the municipal tax of $78, $7.85.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Caston?
No.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Mottel?
Yes.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five-three, or six-three, if I can add. Five-three, sorry.
Item 19, amendment to offer to purchase regarding purchase of city-owned property in TIF number 12, northern 3.26 acres of tax key 1119.132.0055. Presentation by Ian.
Yep. So this is just a simple amendment to the offer to purchase we previously executed. In your packet are the original offer to purchase and the addendum A to the offer to purchase. All this is doing is amending the general due diligence period to allow an additional period for due diligence up to February 1st, 2020. Does not affect the closing dates or anything. It just affects that due diligence period. This is going to allow us to essentially finalize the developer's agreement, which we anticipate, you know, working through in the next couple of weeks, hopefully for approval by the end of the year. And then allow the developer to get final plans and everything in place. So nothing, nothing really big here. It doesn't affect the timelines other than that general due diligence period.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item 20, disallowance of claim for David Hudson-Sicker.
Motion to deny the claim.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign?
Steve.
I'm sorry.
I got a question regarding this, this, this claim. I know our insurance, Trent Administrator, gives a letter stating that the insurance has requested that we advise you that upon completion of our investigation, they find we will be unable to assist you with any damages or costs which may have sustained an above cap'son claim. It doesn't give any reason why something like this sign, which wasn't probably anchored correctly, damage a resident's car, and we're saying, no, we are not responsible for any damage. What was the reason for the denial? I would like to see some type of explanation why our administrator is just saying, no, we're not going to do anything about it. I can see when a tree is broke off from wind damage or something, that's an act of God or that's something different. But regarding this, I know, Ian, can you explain this to me?
Yeah, I mean, it's general, general municipal liability. It's the similar, I mean, this is basically like a pothole that we didn't have any notice about. With municipal liability, it's, did we have prior notice of a defect or of an issue and then failed to address it essentially? So if, I mean, you look at the claims that come in front of the city, I mean, it's sewer backups. Well, as, you know, sewer backups, potholes, you know, pretty much any of those things as long as, you know, it's, it's just a policy decision by the state that regarding municipal liability and immunity, I think the general policy is that if we were liable for every little flaw with the systems that we put in place, we wouldn't put anything in place. Why would we build roads if we're just going to get sued every time somebody hits a pothole? So it's, it's a general policy that's set by the state. They're administering it on our behalf and then noting when they find liability or not. And in this case, because we didn't have any prior notice of any issues with it, they determined there's no liability.
Okay, all right. As a homeowner, I'm, that's, that's where the concern comes. I mean, if I had a sign that went over on somebody's car, obviously insurance is going to be different. I'm liable, but, okay, I understand because, yeah, there are people out there that take advantage of that situation, so.
Yeah, it's the overall policy difference between individual liability and, and municipal and governmental liabilities.
Thank you. That explains that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to deny the claim. All those in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item 21, the operator's license for Marie Fritsch is being deferred to December 2nd. Item number 22, operator's license for Jenny Hamburg. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Hamburg?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
A motion in a second to deny. Again, any questions for Ms. Hamburg by anyone? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item 23, operator's license for Alyssa Fisher. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fisher?
Motion to deny. Second.
I have a motion in a second to deny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Chris, you said aye?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. Item 24, operator's license for Anthony Hutzel. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hutzel?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the license for Anthony Hutzel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by the same sign?
Aye.
Do you want roll call?
Yes, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
No.
Alderman Hugaster?
No.
Alderman Mottel?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
No.
It's tied. So motion fails.
We don't have a tiebreaker. We don't have a tiebreaker, no.
I mean, if there's no motion, it just fails by lack of motion.
So it fails by lack of motion?
Yes.
So. So.
Yes, it didn't. The, the motion to approve fails. And if there's no approval, it fails by lack of action.
Okay. All right. Item 25, report by Alderman Hugaster regarding the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Fortunately, I wasn't there, so I can't say anything. Item 26, report by Alderman Jenkins or Caston regarding the planning commission meeting. Rich, you win.
I guess so. We have the approval of a conditional use permit for a food truck at Cannon Cane Jewelers on 33. So we're adding another food truck to the, to the, to the area. We approved a conditional use permit for the Kiwanis Shelter at the Regner Fishing Pond. We also had a site plan for that, so thanks to the Kiwanis putting up a very nice shelter over by Regner Parks Fishing Pond. We had approval of a site plan for River Shores Chiropractic. Most of us will know that as the castle across from Sendix. They're going to do some work on that and kind of update the, the building. And finally, we approved the Christmas tree sales over on Highway 33 over across from Steins. They're generally there every year, so. That's all we had.
Any questions for Rich? Item 27, a report by Alderman Model regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Yeah, I kind of filled it in at the last minute on this last one, so the, we set a record, right? Meeting time was like 11 minutes? We didn't, we didn't, there wasn't actually a lot to discuss. We went over a little bit, the, the deer that are kind of standing by themselves now without anywhere to go, we're trying to figure that out. What was the other thing? Oh, we're, we're doing the entrepreneurship program. We're having a special meeting tomorrow morning, which I can report back to you at the next council meeting.
Lighting, Christmas lighting.
Oh, and the Christmas lighting, yes, yes. Congratulations, West Bend, on your, on your brand new downtown for Christmas. Thank you to all kinds of people. I don't know who they all are. Is it, can you, I think that, I think that's kind of important, Adam, I'm sorry. I just don't know who they all are.
Sure. A lot of people stepped up for the downtown decorations. West Bend Mutual and Delta Defense, Who's Our House Will Find Diamonds, and then others that wish to remain anonymous.
Right, right. Okay, awesome. Thanks, Adam. That's it.
I think they did a beautiful job. It looks great down there. If there's no other business for the common council, I adjourn. Are there any amendments? I mean, any announcements? If not, have a good evening, everyone.